Good morning. The April 25, 2023, meeting of the Charlotte Zoning Board of Adjustment is now in session. I'm Deborah Dryden, co-chair. Also sitting on today's board is Kevin Shea, Tariq Hamid, Hamilton Court, and Amy Soon. Also present are Lisa McCarter, our Planning Project Manager, Solomon Fortune, the Zoning Administrator, Tariq Hagler Gray, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Jill Sanchez Myers, Senior Assistant City Manager, Terry Edwards, the Clerk to the Board, Candy Thomas, our Veritex Court Reporter. I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are conducting this meeting in person. This is the fourth in-person meeting in 2023 of the Charlotte Zoning Board of Adjustment, and I would like to ask for your patience today as we proceed. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, participants, and presentations. The Zoning Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board that is governed by the North Carolina General Statutes and the Charlotte Zoning Ordinance. We conduct evidentiary hearings on requests for variance and appeals, among other requests. Before we begin to hear the cases on today's agenda, I would like to provide some important information on the steps that were taken to ensure that each party's due process rights are protected as we proceed. Notice of this meeting was provided to the applicants and the public in several ways. Notice that today's hearing was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of each subject property and notified the property owners of the in-person meeting. Notification letters also stated to contact the city immediately if there were any objections to the cases being heard on today's agenda. Notice was also provided by placing signs on each property and by publishing notice on the city's website. The notices for today's meeting contained information about means by which the public can access today's proceedings. Finally, any individual wishing to participate in today's evidentiary hearings were requested to sign up prior to today's proceedings. This information was also included on the board's website. There are hearings. Applications for a variance from the regulations on the zoning ordinance. Applications for a variance from these regulations on the zoning ordinance. The order of the recommendation agenda will be as follows. The zoning administrator or zoning staff member will identify the case and recommend approval of the variance with any recommended conditions based on specific reasons. The chairperson will ask if anyone wants to speak in opposition. If there is such a person, then the case will be moved to the regular agenda and will be heard at a later date. The chairperson will ask if the board has questions for staff or if there is any reason the board wishes to move the case to the regular agenda. The chairperson then calls for a motion and a second to approve the variance. The chairperson will hold a roll call vote. The order of the agenda will be as follows. All parties who plan to give testimony, pro or con, must be sworn in. All zoning staff members will explain why a permit was denied or why a variance is required. The board may question the staff member, and then the applicant may question the staff member. The applicant presents their testimony for this case. The board may question the applicant, and the staff member may question the applicant. The applicant may present sworn witnesses, and they will be subject to questioning. Other parties wishing to speak, pro or con, will be given reasonable time to present sworn testimony. The staff and then the applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. The chairperson calls for a motion and a second to approve the variance. The chairperson will hold a roll call vote. After hearing each case, the board will review each case and render a decision. This is usually done in closed deliberations after hearing each regular agenda case. However, the board may elect to take up to 30 days to render a decision. You may remain present during the deliberations, or you may call the zoning staff after the session to receive the decision of the board. All exhibits must remain with the board. Exhibits were recommended to be provided to the clerk no later than 12:00 PM on Monday, April 24. If your case is not appealed to Superior Court after 30 days, you may pick them up, or they will be destroyed. If you feel there is a conflict of interest of any member of the board or an association that would prejudice your case, please let it be known at the start of your case. The board is acting in a quasi-judicial capacity for purposes of this hearing and can only accept sworn testimony. While the board will not specifically exclude hearsay evidence, it is only given limited weight. The North Carolina State Bar has issued an advisory opinion that it is the unauthorized practice of law for an individual who is not an active member of the bar to appear for another or otherwise assist or represent another at quasi-judicial hearings or zoning and land use matters. All applicants should have been provided with a copy of that advisory opinion as part of the application packet. If you are a property owner or a non-lawyer here on behalf of a property owner and have not received a copy of that opinion, please notify the clerk. The documents will be provided to you. If, as a result of this advisory opinion, the applicant would like to request a continuance of his or her case, the board will consider such requests at the start of that case. The appeal from this board to the Mecklenburg County Superior Court, you have 30 days from the date of the board's written decision in which to appeal in accordance with the NCGS 160D-405D. In order to receive a written copy of the decision, any aggrieved party must file a written request for a copy of the board's decision by filling out the form which must be filed with the board's clerk or chairperson at the time of the hearing of the case. We will hear three cases today, two recommended items, and one regular agenda item. The first case is case number 2023-020 at 6531 Sharon Hills Road. Clerk to the board will read the names of anyone who opposes a case. So, okay, we have no opposition. All right, so we'd like to swear in Lisa and Solomon, if you would.
And Madam Chair, just for purposes of the record and the transcript, I'm a Senior Assistant City Attorney, not Assistant City Manager.
I apologize. It says it right here, but my eyes get ahead of me. I apologize. Jill Sanchez Myers, Senior Assistant City Attorney. All right. Lisa, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand? Okay? We'll start with a staff presentation.
All right, our first case is a residential rear yard variance request. The applicant is requesting a 6.8-foot variance from the required 45-foot rear yard for the compliance of an existing home. And I'll give you a moment to look over your findings.
Okay, Lisa. Thank you.
Exhibit one is a vicinity map. Exhibit two is a zoning map. The property is Zoned R3, single-family. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. Exhibit number four is a close-up aerial map of the property. Exhibit number five is background. The existing home on the property was constructed in 2014, and the building permit correctly noted the 45-foot required rear yard. The permit plot plan showed an unheated garage with unheated attic space above that encroached 10.1 feet into the 45-foot rear yard. And this encroachment was compliant with the code provision allowing unheated extensions of a home to encroach 25% of the depth of the rear yard. So you can see, this is the 25% depth line, and the encroachment was within that area. During construction, the owner worked with the builder to modify the plans and finish and heat the attic space. Conversion of the attic space to heated living area triggered compliance with the 45-foot rear yard and is not permitted within the 25% encroachment. Interior upsets are approved through the county, so it didn't trigger city zoning review. Exhibit number six is the variance request. The applicants commissioned a survey for the sale of the home and discovered the encroachment. The applicants are requesting a 6.8-foot variance from the required rear yard for compliance of the existing home. So there is area that extends beyond that 6.8, but it's unheated, so we would only count this heated area. Exhibit number seven is variance criteria, and all must be met. A necessary hardship would result from the strict application of the ordinance. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, such as location, size, or topography. The hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or property owner, and the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the zoning ordinance. Exhibit number eight is considerations. Staff finds the request meets the standards for granting a variance. Strict application of the ordinance would require unheating the space or shifting the location of the interior wall, and it wouldn't change the exterior of the home. The applicant states these options would reduce the function of the home. The hardship results from conditions peculiar to the property because the lot's depth of 134 feet is smaller than other lots in the neighborhood that average 160 feet in depth or more. So here is the applicant submitted exhibit showing the average depth of all the lots in the area. The 40-foot platted setback, which supersedes the required 30-foot R3 setback, pushes the home further back on the lot, decreasing the rear yard area. So this is the originally approved subdivision plat showing the 40-foot setback. Exhibit number nine is considerations. The applicant states they relied on the builder to convert the attic space to heated area, and he obtained the permitting and certificate of occupancy. They state they were unaware of the encroachment until the survey was commissioned for the sale of the home. The request is consistent with the intent of the ordinance, but it is not easy to detect since the exterior of the home won't change. The encroachment is not easily visible since it's in the rear of the home, and it backs up to a lot that's heavily wooded. On June 1, the Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO, will replace the zoning ordinance regulations, and the R3 zoning of the property will convert to N1A. And the N1A has a smaller rear setback of 40 feet, which is 5 feet less, and that will decrease the encroachment to 1.8 feet. And the 1.8-foot encroachment, starting June 1, would be eligible for administrative adjustment at that time. Exhibit number 10 is a photo of the property, and that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions for me.
Staff, do you have any questions? I mean, board, any questions for staff?
Just curious, the use of the property behind the home?
Yeah, the property, do you want to see a bigger aerial?
Just curious, what is the use?
It's vacant, and it looks like it's accessory overflow parking for the project across the street.
So what will that area be zoned, behind the property, when the new UDOs go into place? Do you know, I mean, do you have any idea?
Yes, that will go to N1A.
So it could be developed someplace down the line?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, and there's no one in opposition?
No, Chair.
All right. Then I'll pose this part of the hearing, and we'll go into our deliberations. Mr. Hamid, any comments?
No additional comments.
Mr. Court?
No comments.
Miss Soon? Mr. Shea? All right, well, then, do I entertain a motion to approve or deny?
Motion to approve the variance.
All right, a motion to approve the variance was made by Mr. Hamid. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Court. All right, now we'll do the roll call vote. Mr. Shea? Mr. Hamid?
Yes.
Hamilton, Mr. Court?
Yes.
Miss Soon?
Yes.
Dryden, yes. So the variance is approved. Thank you very much for your participation. All right, now, we need to do the finding of facts. Do I hear a motion to approve the finding of facts?
Motion to approve findings of fact.
All right, Mr. Court has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Hamid, second.
All right. Now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Shea? Miss Soon?
Soon, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Dryden, yes. So the finding of facts and conditions of law are approved. Very much. All right. Next case on the agenda is 2023-021. The property at 4720 Piedmont Road Drive.
It should be at several addresses, including Sharon Road West and Gruenwald.
Yeah, that's the only one that I saw on the paper, but that's, yes, I see. Okay, do you need to read that? Do I need to read those into the record? Okay.
That's fine. This is a utility screening variance. The applicant is requesting two variances from the specific standards required for screening. A variance to permit a chain-link fence with plastic slats to be used for screening, and a variance from the maximum fence height in the side yard and setback to permit an 8-foot fence. And I'll give you a minute to look over your findings.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. You may continue.
Exhibit number one is a vicinity map of the property. Exhibit number two is a zoning map. The property is Zoned R3, single-family. Exhibit number three is an aerial map. And the property spans several parcels, so this red dash line is the total project area. But the lot in question that's subject to the variance is this parcel, and it's a through lot, and it's got a single-family home facing Gruenwald. And then the public utility structure is up here on Sharon Road West. So it's this portion of the property that's subject to the variance. And here's just a close-up of that area. Exhibit number five is background. There's a 1981 regulator, 1981 regulator station located on the property, and it's a public utility structure, and that's permitted in single-family zoning subject to supplemental regulations, including a requirement for a fence that is not easily climbable and screening requirements. Chain-link fences with plastic slats are prohibited when facing a right-of-way or residentially-used or zoned property, and the fencing faces Sharon Road West, and the adjacent properties are in residential zoning. So the chain-link fencing would not be permitted, and it is non-conforming. The code limits the height of the fence to 5 feet within a required setback or 6 feet along a side yard in a residential district. So here is your setback area, and then here's your side yards. The code requires a proposed right-of-way measured 50 feet from the center line of Sharon Road West, since it's arterial street. A transitional setback of 30 feet is measured from the proposed setback and acts as the setback for the property. The regulator station is not compliant with modern safety regulations, and the applicant is required to upgrade the site to meet federal and state standards. They're required to install a launcher to the pipeline that will allow the inspection of the function of the pipeline. And as part of this project, the applicant wishes to install a new chain-link, plastic-slatted fence that's 1 foot taller than the existing fence. Exhibit number six is the variance requests. Normal repair and maintenance of the non-conforming fence that's there now is allowed, but a new fence is subject to today's zoning requirements. The applicant is requesting two variances to allow the upgrade of the regulator station, a variance to allow a chain-link fence with plastic slats to be used for screening, and a variance from the maximum fence height to allow an 8-foot fence. So this would be a 3-foot variance within that transitional setback area and 2 feet along the sides. Exhibit seven is the criteria, and I won't read them all again, but all of them must be met. And exhibit number eight is considerations. Staff finds the request meets the standards for granting a variance. Unnecessary hardship results from the ordinance because without the variance, the applicant wouldn't be able to make federally mandated upgrades to the facility. The hardship results from conditions peculiar to the property because the regulator station is strategically located over the pipeline that was constructed in 1968, and it can't be moved to another location. The hardship didn't result from actions taken by the applicant since the variance is due to mandatory federal and state upgrades. The non-conforming regulator station was developed in 1981, and the existing enclosure is a 7-foot chain-link fence with plastic slats. Exhibit nine is considerations. The requested variance is consistent with the intent of the ordinance and will not adversely affect adjacent properties since the regulator station has been on the property for 42 years. The 1-foot increased fence height will not be easy to detect because the bushes along Sharon Road West will be preserved. And then there's a natural screening to the south. So you can see, back here is to the south. This is the conditions on Sharon Road West. The west side doesn't currently have any screening, so that will just remain the same. And the east is the only side where vegetation will be removed to accommodate parking. So this is the current view from the east, and this is the west. The adjacent property to the west is a park, and the property to the east is a heavily wooded functional rear yard of a home facing Gruenwald. The variance will uphold public safety, and the applicant has provided a letter from P&amp;G's Lead Physical Security Specialist that outlines how chain-link fencing with privacy slats is necessary because it allows for indiscriminate viewing, provides individual protection, and includes security in its design, like push bar, crash bar, man-egress gates. Other fencing materials are not designed for safety purposes and allow for exposure of gate hardware on the unsecured side of the fence. The fence height of 8 feet is necessary to deter access. Exhibit number 10 is considerations. And this shows, this is the functional rear yard of this lot, so this home is facing Gruenwald. Exhibit number 11 is a photo of the property, and that's the end of my presentation, if you have questions for me.
I have a question. The picture you're showing, that vegetation will stay, or they're taking that down?
Yes.
And the fence that we're seeing right now, that is the fence they're going to re-erect, right? I don't know what a, when you talk about a slatted...
Yeah, so this is slatted right now. You can kind of see the slats.
Okay.
So they'll be replacing the fence. So if they were just maintaining this fence, it wouldn't require...
But it's still going to be slatted with chain-link behind it or in front of it, or?
Yeah, it'll look just like this, but taller.
Okay, that was my question. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay, Mr. Shea?
Is John Mullin here, or is somebody from P&amp;G?
Yes. If we want to ask some questions, we need to take off the recommendation. Yeah.
Get him sworn in so we can ask him.
Okay, well, we'll let Lisa finish her, and then we'll have him come in soon. Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, sir. If you will come and we'll swear you in. If you'll come to the front and state your name and your position. I guess if he wants to ask questions, so do I need to, do I need to? Okay, so we're moving this off the recommended agenda to the regular agenda so that we may ask questions. All right, sir, if you'll state your name?
John Mullin.
And your position?
I'm a project manager.
For?
Energy land infrastructure engineers.
Do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Shea?
On the current safety standards that are in place right now for this particular project, this piece of land, what is in place besides the fence?
Talking about the site security or?
Security, exactly.
It's just the fence is the security there now.
Okay, so the, coming soon, I forget the wording that was in the application, but it was talking about the new mandatory security for the sites, which I assume we'll see in other places in town. Is there anything besides the fence that will be required for security for this site?
Yeah, so the federal mandate is pipeline safety, so it's not talking about the fence necessarily. So what that is referring to is what's called inline inspection. So you can inspect the buried pipeline with the launcher that's required. So that's what the federal law is mandating. Now, the fence that's there now is a 7-foot fence, and the Piedmont standard design is the 8-foot fence. But that letter that she was referencing was provided by Piedmont Security, talking about just the fence, if that makes sense. But the federal law is talking about the launcher for the pipeline, if that makes sense. So it's pipeline safety. But yeah, I would suspect that, all in all, there would be similar projects that Piedmont would have, you know, in this area and have done similar. We have, our company has done multiple ones here in this area over the years. This one just was different because of the setback, if that makes sense.
It does. So is there any video surveillance out there right now?
No, I don't think so.
And so does the fence have some kind of protection, razor wire, anything on top of it? It does?
Yes, so the design of fence, it's 8-foot tall is the chain link, and then it's got a 1-foot barbed wire around the perimeter, and that's the primary security would be the barbed wire at the top. That gives the total 8-foot tall height.
Total 8, okay. All right, very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. All right. Close the hearing now and move into deliberations. Mr. Shea, would you like to start? Comments?
Sorry?
Any comments?
No more.
Okay, Miss Soon?
No comments.
Mr. Court?
No comments.
Mr. Hamid?
No comments.
All right, do I have a motion to approve or deny?
Motion.
Oh, Mr. Shea? All right, Mr. Shea moves to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Court. Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Shea?
Shea, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Miss Soon?
Soon, yes.
Dryden, yes. So the variance is approved. Thank you. All right, now to the finding of facts. Do I hear a motion to approve the finding of facts?
Motion to approve finding of facts.
Mr. Court, do I have a second?
Second.
Miss Soon? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Shea?
Shea, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Miss Soon?
Soon, yes.
Dryden, yes. So the finding of facts and conclusions of law are approved for this case. Thank you for your participation, gentlemen. All right, the last case is an agenda item. It is case 2023-017. For a property located at 1101 Lee Circle, they are requesting a variance from the maximum fence height in the side yard. Okay, all right, Lisa, thank you.
All right, and I'll give you a moment to look at your findings. Yes, the applicant is here. Oh, yes.
Would you like me to swear them in now, or wait till they have to speak? All right, sir, if you'll state your name and your address, and we'll swear you in.
Frank O'Treglia, 1101 Lee Circle, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28216.
Okay, and do you swear and affirm to tell... Okay, and do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter at hand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, Lisa, you may continue with your presentation.
Okay, we also have.
You have a seat, sir.
We also have code enforcement staff. If we want to go ahead and swear them.
Okay, code enforcement staff, all right, you'll step up. We'll swear you in. If you'll state your names, please.
State your names, code enforcement inspector.
Mark Fowler, code enforcement supervisor.
Okay, gentlemen, do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is, is there anybody in opposition? Okay, thank you. All right, Lisa, you may then continue.
Okay. Exhibit number one is a vicinity map of the property. Exhibit number two is a zoning map. The property is Zoned R3, single family. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. Exhibit number four is a close-up aerial map of the property. And this is the fence location right here. Exhibit number five is background. In February 2023, code enforcement staff received a complaint about a fence that exceeded height regulations. Code enforcement verified that the height of the fence exceeded the maximum fence height and issued a notice of violation. Exhibit number six is the variance request. The maximum height for a fence in the required side yard, between the required setback and established rear yard is six feet. So that's this area right here. And the maximum height for a fence in the established rear yard is eight feet. That's behind there, and the home is catty corner, but the way that we do the established rear yard, it's parallel from the front. The applicant's fence height is 10 feet, and they are requesting a variance to allow the fence to remain. So this is a four-foot variance from the maximum six-foot fence height in the side yard and a two-foot variance from the maximum eight-foot fence height in the established rear yard. Exhibit number seven is the variance criteria. Exhibit number eight is considerations. Staff finds the request does not meet all the criteria for granting a variance. The hardship results from actions taken by the applicant who installed the fence that exceeds the height allowance. Unnecessary hardships do not result from the ordinance regulation, and the applicant states the hardship is due to a no-contact order from the neighbor. A compliant option to provide privacy would be to plant tall evergreen bushes along the side of the property. Exhibit number nine is considerations. The hardship does not result from conditions peculiar to the property because the fence height requirements are shared by all other properties in residential zoning districts. And granting the variance may set a precedent for allowing increased fence height. The applicant states the topography of the land slopes so that the neighbor's house is higher and the rear deck looks into theirs. There's a 10-foot elevation change between the subject property and the neighbors, but a 10-foot elevation change between properties is common in the area. So this map shows 10-foot contour lines in yellow. And so these are all the properties that have about a 10-foot elevation change between properties. Exhibit 10 is considerations. The variance request is not consistent with the maximum fence height for all residential zoning districts. There is a personal safety consideration, and the applicant states that their neighbor stalks and harasses them, and they provided a copy of their no-contact order. Exhibit number 11 is photos. And as you could see, the fence in the distance here, and then here's a close-up. And that's the end of my presentation if you have any questions for me. And we also have the applicant here, as you know.
Lisa, in the, in the new UDOs, is the fence height requirement going to change?
Yeah, it'll become a little more stringent. And so what'll happen is the established, you won't, you only have five feet in this area currently. And so with the new UDO, that, that area that you can only have five feet goes to the established setbacks. So this is the required setback. So it goes back to the established setback, but that's the only change.
So the fence height does not change?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I do, I have one question. Can I see that corn, contour topo again, please? All right, so the neighbor we're talking about is on the left. Mr. Tregley is on.
This is the neighbor, and this is the subject.
I'm sorry, I'm colorblind. If people, I can't see red or green, so when you, I can't see anything you point. But I believe the corner is the applicant.
Teresa Lane property corner.
Yes, and the neighbor's to the left. So the two, the two stars, they look like it might be some color. Must be red or something, because I can see outlines, but I can't see the.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. So they, and the, we don't know, is there a, is there a a bird's eye view of the two houses? You have that, I saw the area before, but I couldn't. I think it's just the one house you're showing, right? Okay, here we go, that's it, that's my.
Neighbors are to the south of, of the property at the corner there on Teresa and Lee.
Thank you.
I'll have to figure out a way to do future presentations where you can. Yeah.
Is there entrance off Teresa Lane onto that home or not? Or the, the driveway is on Lee, on Lee Court, Lee Circle, right?
There's two driveway areas.
Driveway entrances, okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Lisa. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Treglea, would you?
Yes, ma'am.
To give your presentation now?
My presentation? I didn't really prepare a presentation.
Anything you'd like to tell us, that would be fine.
Well, I'm basically here asking for the variance because of the harassment from our neighbors next door. Anytime my wife or my children go out into our yard, which, as you can see, we have a small pool, we have a playground back there. So they try to spend a lot of time out there, and every, the minute they walk out of the house, the, the neighbor would come out, start videotaping, start laughing, turning music on really, really loud. And that's how we ended up getting the court order against her. Now, she has recently deceased, that neighbor, the girlfriend, recently deceased. But the boyfriend is going to get out of, he's incarcerated currently. He is going to be out on bail, and we're afraid that he will continue the harassment. So one of the reasons why we're asking to leave the fence up because that deterred her from coming out and video, videotaping my children and my wife. And it blocked the view from their deck, which is where the harassment starts. And it would block the view completely. We are willing to sign any kind of a contract. We are, oh, we are going to move up to Lincoln County, probably 2024, next year. We'd be willing to take it down when the time comes. We just want it up while we're still there. That's the only request I have. It's, it's temporary fix until we are finally capable of moving and not have this neighbor next to us anymore. All this harassment has forced us to move. I mean, we, we don't have any choice at this point.
So you say the person that you got the restraining order against is now deceased?
Correct.
Who, who owns the property, do you know?
I believe his name is A.J. Belk, Audi, Audi Junior.
Is there anyone occupying the house at this time, at this moment?
Uh, no, he's still incarcerated, but we, we believe he's going to be set out on bail soon.
Okay, questions?
I maybe have some questions for staff, but no questions for the.
Oh, okay, well, if you have questions for staff.
If, so if a variance is denied and the, what are the financial penalties for noncompliance with a?
I might call on code enforcement staff.
Hey, good morning. I'm Mark Fowler. My address is 2550 West Boulevard here in Charlotte. A little background, I've been with the city since 2009. I've been a supervisor over the permit center since that time. And been doing zoning with our zoning ordinance since then. So sent a lot of issues with fences. Typically, as, as what's been described, there has been, usually when I see a fence at high, it's usually some type of dispute between neighbors. I, I try to answer any questions.
How, how long, so if, so how long does the property owner have to remove that fence? First of all, I guess, is the question.
So our process is, there was a notice of violation that was issued. Through that process, the property owner has a right to appeal, which is done within the first 30 days. In this case, they came in for a variance. So at this point, what we typically do at the out, at the decision and the letter that's issued, there is a window, also a window to appeal. So they, we allow them that the next 30 days from the date of the, the letter from the board, decision from the board, before we step to our next action. If we start issuing citations for noncompliance, according to the zoning ordinance, the first citation is a $50 citation. We give them 10 days to comply. If no compliance, and we issue a $200 citation, 10 days to comply. And if not, then it escalates to a $500 citation. And any citation after that for noncompliance is, is a $500 citation. And it just repeats in that cycle until we get the compliance.
Okay, thanks.
Does that, does that citation attach to the house, or does it attach to the person?
It's issued to the property owner.
So if they sold the house, it would show up?
Again, it's issued to the property owner. There is, on the back end, there is a, we turn all of our citations over to the finance department, who then issues invoices for those to the property owner, or how the citations were issued.
So the property's not leaned? That's correct, okay.
Yes, correct.
I have questions for Mr. Tregley, if I could.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Tregley, can you give us a little background first on this dispute? Jenna Barnes or Jenna Barris was the person?
Jenna Barnes.
At the next door?
Mm-hmm.
And they don't own that house, they're renting that house, is that?
The boyfriend owns the house.
The boyfriend owns the house?
Yes.
And he is the one that committed the crime?
Correct.
And so I, I thought I saw there was a mention of they had children. Is that not true?
They have one child.
They have one child, and that child is not living there now?
Nope. The house is empty.
Sorry?
The house is currently empty.
The house is totally empty?
Yes.
And so, but the child was their, their child?
That day?
Yes, I should say.
I believe how it happened, the child was placed in the car. And then Jenna Barnes went back into the home. She was there to pick up the child. She picked up the child, put the child in the car, went back into the house, and that's when the incident happened.
I see. All right, so the, the child, if he were to get out of jail and go back to the house, would the child come back and join him?
That, I don't know that information. I, I believe, I believe her family got custody of the child. But this is what I'm hearing from other people, so I don't know for sure.
Okay. All right, so the, the actual thing you had against the Jenna?
Yes.
Is obviously dissolved. You'd never had one against her, her boyfriend, though?
No, because she instigated everything. And we're just a little apprehensive about when he gets out on bail, he may continue.
But you had no idea if he will or not?
I don't. He may, he may not.
Because there's never been a situation where she was not there and he was there? Because now she's gone, you don't know what's going to happen if he's there by himself?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And just to reiterate, he was there instances when she was harassing my family. So, okay, he was there, he was present.
Ms. Sanchez Myers, I just realized I have a conflict, and I need to rekeyze myself.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to, can you, just for purposes of the record, provide a little bit of information?
Sure, I, the, my, my next door neighbor is the, I guess, step-grandfather of Jana. And I was involved in helping Jana's stepfather work on contact for custody of the child. And probably made Facebook posts about this case that may, so I have a personal connection to the, the neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
That's pretty solid conflict.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Court, or?
Yes, question being, just presuming that would influence your decision to be objective in the case.
Yeah, I would, I'm kind of emotional right now. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize it earlier when we were through it, but.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
So does that impact our ability to do this case?
So you still have a quorum of four members who are participating. And actually, Mr. Court, if you could come sit off in the audience. Or you, you don't have to, just to step away from the table. Yes, so three votes are required on any, on any variance request. Typically, our process has been that if there are less than five, a full panel of board members, the applicant is given the option to request a continuance to the next meeting when there would be five members who could hear the case. So as that is our, the, the board's current practice, I, I would recommend that, that opportunity be extended to the applicant at this time if he would like to proceed with four members. Again, three votes are required, whether there are four members seated or five members seated. But if you would like to address that.
Mr. Treglea, you've heard the, your options. You can defer for a month because, and, and request that we have a full board. Or you can, we can continue the process and you would, with four people. What is your wish?
That'd be fine, we can continue.
Continue?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions before we go into deliberations?
I do have one, one more question, I'm sorry. For staff, the, the, I think I heard you say that the contours were.
Say continue, and continue with the case this morning, or would you like to continue to next month?
No, no, no.
You have five members.
That's fine, four members are fine.
Just wanted to clarify for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tari. Keep me on my toes. That's true. Okay, Lisa, did you hear Mr. Sheik's question?
Can you repeat the question?
You were saying common and typical for this was a kind of a hilly contour for this neighborhood, is that?
Correct.
True it is common?
Correct, and here's the map that probably isn't very helpful, but.
So not unique to this, this property? Thank you.
Okay, I, I have a question. Do we have the ability as a board to put a stipulation in that says if we approve this, that upon the sale of the home, he will take it down? Do we have that ability to do that?
So a, a condition like that would conflict with, under the statute, you know, the variance runs with the land. So any subsequent owner would be granted the same variance and could have a 10-foot-high fence, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have the ability to put a time limit on remedy? Can we say you have 90 days to cure?
So curing the violation is actually not under this board's purview. That's what code enforcement, that's their department. Um, this is just whether the applicant has met the standards, um, for a variance from the ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or for Mr. Treglia? All right, we'll close this part of the hearing and go into deliberations. Okay, guys, I'm open to comments. Mr. Hamid?
Sure, um, just looking at our variance criteria, um, these are kind of the, the guiding principles of, uh, how we approve or deny a variance request. Uh, looking at number one, it's not necessary to demonstrate that no reasonable use can be made of the property without the variance. It appears it solved the issue temporarily for them. But, um, there are also other options, it sounds like, uh, relative to safety, uh, that they're pursuing as well. Uh, number two, conditions that are peculiar to this property, uh, there's a lot of rolling hills in Charlotte. We don't want to set a precedent, in my opinion, that, um, just because you live on a property that happens to be at a high point, that you can have a fence, uh, that helps offset, um, the conditions. Number three, uh, self-created hardship, um, in my opinion, this is self-created hardship. Uh, they did build the extension on their fence, therefore they created this hardship. Uh, number four, um, public safety, substantial justice, um, I interpret this as safety of the general public, not individual safety. And again, it sounds like they are pursuing other avenues, uh, to ensure their, uh, personal safety. So, uh, just reading through the four criteria, um, obviously I lean towards denying this variance request.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sun, comment?
Yeah, I am leaning towards denying this request because, uh, for a similar reason, it sets, uh, an unfavorable precedent, um, and also, uh, for public safety and also for the individual's safety. Right now, the, uh, Mrs. Barnes is already deceased and, um, the house is empty. There is no imminent threat. Um, and the fact that, um, Mr. Treglia is looking to move, um, another reason is that the variance attached to the property, um, so we don't want this, uh, to persist after they move. Therefore, um, I'm leaning towards denying it.
Okay, comments, Mr. Shea?
I think I would echo the same comments I just heard.
Okay, um, I, I too have difficulty with this. I, I'm, um, I can understand why you, you put it up. I think some of the circumstances have changed, and unfortunately, um, this board can't deal in what ifs. Uh, wha- what if he gets out, what if he does, uh, since he was not specifically naming the complaint that she filed. And the hardship was created when you built the fence. I can understand why you did it, but because everything travels with the land, and we can't, we can't, with, you know, it's not our purview, even though you say you'll take it down, I would like to take you at your word, um, but we can't do that. It doesn't meet the criteria. So unfortunately, I too would, um, vote to not approve this variance request. Do I hear a motion? On the board? All right, um, Mr. Shea has given us a motion to deny. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Sun has given the second. Okay, Mr. Shea?
Should deny.
Ms. Sun?
Deny.
Mr. Hamid?
Deny.
Ms. Dryden, deny. So I'm sorry, the variance request has been denied. All right, the finding of facts and, um, conditions of law, do I hear a motion to approve? As written? All right, Mr. Shea has a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Sun has a second. All right, Mr. Hamid?
Uh, Hamid, yes.
Can I, Mr.?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I, can I confer with Ms. Sanchez Myers just for a moment before you continue with that?
Yes, you may.
One second to process the, where we are procedurally. So before a full vote on the findings of fact is taken, if, if, um, uh, Ms. Haggler Gray and I have conferred, and, um, the attorneys would like to offer one, um, amendment for consideration, um, a friendly, uh, well, we can't offer a friendly amendment, but, um, if, 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 if I may be heard and anyone wants to make a friendly amendment, um, w- we're looking at finding of fact 22, and, um, the recommendation would be to, um, strike out the first part of that sentence, um, that there is a personal safety consideration to the request because, and just start the sentence that the applicant states that they feel their family is in danger because the neighbor has continually stalked and harassed them, and they provided a copy of no contact order filed October 23rd, 22. Um, however, that, you know, the evidence at the hearing has also demonstrated that that neighbor is now deceased as of the date of this hearing. And so, um, I think that's, um, a, an important fact to acknowledge in the board's order. Kind of seems to give some weight to the way the board was, um, was discussing and, and feeling. So, um, that would be, uh, a potentially another just added sentence at the end of, of 22 for discussion and consideration, if you...
So, who would strike first, say, consideration? Start with the applicant states.
Yes, that would be, uh, the recommenda- our recommendation.
The end of that, then would say that the, um, that the neighbor is now deceased?
Something along those lines, yes.
Yeah, I think we strike the first section of, um, finding of fact number 22. Um, strike, there is a personal safety consideration of the request because, start item 22 with the applicant states they feel that their family is in danger because their neighbor has constantly stalked and harassed them, and they have provided a content, a copy of a not, no contact order filed October 3rd, 2022, period. Uh, next sentence, um, said harasser, said neighbor is currently deceased, period. Is deceased. Thank you. Um, I would also change has continuously to had. Um, I would also offer maybe some modifications to findings of fact number 23. Um, I didn't hear anything about a neighbor surveillance system. Um, it appears that from some of the records, some of the, uh, some of the material that was provided to us that, um, the applicant has a s- a surveillance system, just from some of the photos. What I did hear, uh, from the applicant was the neighbor, um, had taken photos of them. Um, I wouldn't consider that a surveillance system. Any questions, comments about striking that section? And then possibly adding and the harass, harassing individual whom is currently, whom is deceased? There's no evidence that the individual that's incarcerated currently is a harassing individual.
Well, there is a statement here in those documents that says Joanna Barnes has been watching her cameras and waiting till she's notified on her phone that there is movement or noise. It's in this, in the, in the documents that Mr. Treglia provides.
May I speak?
No, sir. But would that not constitute hearsay? I don't see any evidence. There's not a picture of that person's video surveillance system.
Well, it was, um, it's evidence that he provided to get the search order.
It's...
Oh, from the neighbor.
Yeah, it's stating that the neighbor had a video surveillance system. I just don't see any evidence of
That's true.
to support that fact, finding of fact.
Madam Chair, it may, this is just an organization issue, but it may be, um, a good idea to move 22 and 23 up, um, like in between eight and nine, just sort of rearrange, um, so that the findings of fact end with 21. But that's just, it's just more form, not substance. Mr., uh...
Let's go back to 22. Um, so we're striking...
23.
The applicant has been building a 10-foot fence, has provided their family protection from the neighbor's surveillance system. How many did we just say? The applicant states that their 10-foot fence has provided their family protection from the harassing individual. Okay?
And Mr. Hamid had also added whom is deceased. Is that, is that part of the amendment?
Yes. Let me read through something there. Part number 12. The applicant states they feel their family is... Was. The said neighbor had continuously stalked and harassed them, and they have provided a copy of a no contact filed October 2022, period. Said neighbor is deceased. And then the 20, we will read the applicant states they feel the 10-foot fence has provided their family protection from the harassing individual who is deceased. That, the previous criteria, we will move, we will stay at number 21. Well, now we'll renumber it. That the variance request is not consistent with the maximum fence size, will be the last state, and we're moving 22 and 23 up. So, we'll come to the new nine and 10.
So we're striking nine and 10 altogether?
No, we'll leave it at nine and 10, which has been reduced to 22 and 23, number 10.
Okay.
So it would be eight, number eight, and then number nine will read the applicant states that they feel their family is blah, 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 and number 10, then is the time the applicant states they feel. So, the original number nine would be, now become 11, and then you just renumber it from there.
Right.
Does everybody agree with that? All right, uh, so we need to start again. Do I have a motion to approve the findings of fact and conditions of law as amended?
So, so Mr., actually, so Mr. Hamid has made a friendly amendment, um, and, uh, the board has discussed. So Mr. Shea, do you accept his friendly amendment? Okay, and Ms. Sun, do you still second the motion with, with the amendment? Great.
Okay.
Now you can move into a vote.
Well, yeah, we're just gonna...
It's a little tricky, but sure.
Just saying. Okay, so we, we, as amended, Mr. Hamid's friendly amendment. Mr. Shea has made the motion, Ms. Sun has seconded, now we vote. Please hear me.
Hamid, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Ms. Sun, yes.
Mr. Shea?
Shea, yes.
Dryden, yes. So the that confirms the...
Minutes?
Yes. Just, uh, agenda, I would prepare your next one, Mr. and I would shoot events.
How do I find out how long I have to remove the fence?
We'll have a conversation.
Oh, okay, good enough. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, uh, now we have, um, the clerk's draft of the minutes from, um, March. It was provided to you via email. Are there any corrections to the minutes as you looked over them? All right. Are there any further corrections or are there objections to approving the minutes as distributed or corrected?
No, checks.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the March meeting?
Court moved to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Sun, I have a, a motion by Mr. Court, a second from Ms. Sun. Hearing no objections, uh, we're, uh, now, Mr. Shea, do you approve?
Shea, yes.
Sun?
Yes.
Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Court?
Court, yes.
Dryden? Yes. So the minutes are adopted as distributed and corrected. Is there any further business?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.